Aloha and welcome everyone to the Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development Tourism for the 1pm hearing. We have two GMs on our agenda today. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end the hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee reconvened to discuss any outstanding business at 1pm on Thursday, March 16th. A group 229 and a public notice was posted on the legislature website. Please note, we have a one-minute limit per testimony for our energy plan to enforce a time limit for these governors' messages. We will first take testimony and then I will give the nominees a chance for a short opening statement before the committee asks questions. For the record, there is a lot of testimony, so I ask that you either stand on your testimony since we have all your testimonies. If not, you guys might drag this thing on that we might have to defer this, just for the record. So first up, in support, Governor Green. Second, I would like Chris Sariyasu.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chris Sariyasu, DBED Director, and standing in testimony, strong support. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with them and look forward to many years with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dennis Lin.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Dennis Lin, standing in strong support.
Thank you. Next, Jay Bhute. In person, next, Ajimina Katani. Thank you. Next up, Len Higashi. Thank you. Don Cheng.
The Department stands on written testimony and support.
Thank you. Guen Yama Moro.
Good afternoon, the 30 seconds.
Thank you. Akeem, she's not here. In support, Gary Suganam Nua, in support. Lance Scott, you know, Young Pile Guys in support. In person, Micom Nekata, not here, in support. You know, anyone else in support that not on this list that is, do they like say support? Thank you. Okay, oh, sorry.
George Skinner at Creo Industries in strong support.
Okay, thank you, George John.
John, if you're in the soli, there's a board in strong support.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else want to jump up? Too many names. No, I could take forever each of this. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yeah. Aloha, Caroline Carl, Hawaii Energy, standing on our written support. Thank you for the opportunity, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members.
Thank you. I think we have somebody else on Zoom too. IT, anybody else on Zoom?
No one else currently.
No one else?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mark, if you want to come up?
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Kai, Senator Kim, I'm deeply grateful. I did answer seven questions and the written testimony is there and I stand on that, but I just would like to add a few further comments. I'm really grateful for the trust that Governor Green has bestowed in me to take on the Hawaii State Energy Office at this really critical time and I'm humbled, truly humbled to be here today. Some of the key points overall, I think in summary, I think there's a lot of, I bring a lot of energy knowledge, experience, and sensitivity to the overall economic, cultural needs and desires of people throughout Hawaii. You know, there were a lot of discussion about the experience. I've been in this space for more than 30 years. It really bridged three critical parts of my life, almost three different lifetimes, but I think the probably the most apropos is the time spent here in Hawaii. And since 2003 with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, which I truly viewed as an apprenticeship, allowed me to also work on energy matters there to try to reduce costs for Hawaiian beneficiaries during the time that I spent as Head of Economic Development for the whole Office of Hawaiian Affairs. After that, I was very fortunate to spend five years at the, as Energy Office Administrator and detail some of the key accomplishments that occurred there in the areas of energy efficiency with significant amount of energy savings performance contracts, leading the nation for five years consecutively, and also working well on, with the legislature on key matters like community-based renewable energy, which is delivering renewable energy opportunities to all parts of our Hawaii, all parts of Hawaii, I mean even low and moderate income individuals, people who don't have rooftop solar. And of course, we passed the, with your support, 100% mandate, working with Senator Lee, who was then Representative Lee and Senator Gaver, the time at the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute, which really refined my skills and took a lot of these programs internationally. And the vision for the Energy Office is really clear. We want to get our fair share of the federal funding that's available to us. We want to be able to be competitive, but we most importantly want to create economic development opportunities. We want to reduce costs over time, most importantly, reduce price, oil price volatility, and I think we have excellent programs to be able to do that. And primarily with collaboration with the Department of Energy. Right now, we have outstanding $1.2 billion in grant opportunities that we are in the midst of applying for today. Happy to go into detail about any or all of those matters and really hear any answering questions of my back.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Committee Members, you guys go ahead.
The Supreme Court decision two days ago killing Pohunua was, I found surprising considering we have a very successful biomass plant on Kauai that burns wood to the benefit of the residents of Kauai. What's your take? I mean, since biomass is just one of the tools in the firm renewable opportunities out there, what's your position on the balance between intermittent and firm renewable power of the state?
Well, there's no doubt, and you bring up a really important issue that, which there's a lot of analysis around, which is as you get to extremely high rates of renewable, you're going to need about 10 to 15, possibly even 20% of power that you can consider dispatchable, that you can immediately provide 24 hours a day. Biomass could be a very good opportunity for that. We also know that hydrogen is emerging as a firm, as a storage means, which could actually provide that firm renewable. So that's also very exciting. I think those are two important aspects other than liquid fuels. And liquid fuels, as we know, very difficult and costly to do that renewable. But biofuels remains also one of those options and biodiesel, renewable biodiesel.
So do you agree with the Supreme Court decision from two days ago?
Well, I can honestly say that I did not read the opinion, but I do know, one thing that I can say is that in looking at whether or not the appropriateness of this, I think is it from a technology standpoint and from the ability to provide dispatchable power, it would definitely have provided that. What I can't really comment on is whether or not it could have done that in a really cost-effective way and whether or not, you know, the Public Utilities Commission, Consumer Advocate, and all of the other concerns would have overridden the actual contractual obligations that were underway. I don't, I'm not really in a position to be able to comment on that, but I can say that certainly from a resource standpoint, it could have served in renewable picture.
In 2020, I think one of the few legislative mistakes we made was to prematurely shut down the coal plant. 2020, there was an opportunity in 2021, as well as in 2022, to, you know, just pull back and give the renewable energy sector a time to get through its supply chain permitting and all of those issues. If you were the chief energy officer back at that time, would you have supported the idea of holding back on the immediate shutdown, not the immediate, but the September 2022 shutdown of the coal plant until things lined up properly, or would you have taken the course that your predecessor took, which was just let it go and cross our fingers and hope for the best?
Well, in hindsight, you know, one could say, well, there turned out to be no rolling blackouts and it actually worked. I think that one thing that we will attempt to do, maybe different, I'm not sure, but one thing we'll attempt to do is carefully plan and I think we'll be more pragmatic in terms of the staging and phasing of these things. And I think it was quite clear that with supply chain disruptions that didn't allow as much renewable energy to be deployed in a timely fashion, there might have been some need for flexibility there, but again, that's all in hindsight. I'm not here to second guess what transpired, but I am grateful and I do have to commend Hawaiian Electric for standing up and having their own contingency plans. I recall Shelley Camaro making very strong statements that we were not going to have brownouts and blackouts, and she turned out to be correct.
We can have brownouts and blackouts, but we have a 30% increase for all rate pairs in the state. Was that a justifiable give for the lack of brownouts and blackouts?
Well, the, you know, the decision, that was a pretty broad decision. I know that legislature was involved in making that decision about removing something that was, you know, effectively a six cent per kilowatt hour contribution. And I think those have to be extremely well-thought-out transitions. At some point, coal was going to have to be phased out. At that moment, again, in hindsight, one could argue that the staging and phasing could have been done a heck of a lot better with less price-cost disruption to the consumer.
Thank you. Senator Favella?
Thank you. Let's just start off on, on behalf of the Energy Office, you submitted comments regarding Senate Bill 1247 relating to waste-to-energy. Your comments was that the efforts with development for waste-to-energy facility was not successful due to lack of feedstock waste for the project to be effective. If confirmed, are you going to be keeping an open mind regarding the new waste-to-energy technology that we have successfully considered to move forward and what's happening in Germany? That's one.
No, absolutely, Senator Favella. I think that's a really important point. Waste-to-energy is an effective technology. You have to always manage supply and demand and in order to make it operate on an economic basis. But I do know that with, you know, in the planning effort we recently had in, still underway in Maualaka, there's been attempts to actually use some of the waste wood and other things, and that's a consideration. Again, the community's going to have to weigh in whether or not it wants to actually have a waste-to-energy plant, but that's always a consideration. There are, in Maui, there's wasted paralysis that's going to potentially create hydrogen, and that's going to be another really great waste-to-energy technology. So we definitely will have an open mind on that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say so, do you know why you're not having enough feedstock for the one that is going now? Do you know the current reason why? It's coming in as the energy chair. Do you know?
Well, I do know that, that, well, some of it still continues to go to landfill and it's, you know, the separation issues and where it's being placed, but I think most of it is that with the expansion of H Power, it just simply was too large to be able to absorb all of the waste. But are there other issues that you wanted to point out?
Yes. The reason why I say that is because when I was on the wood board, I was 110% supportive of us using taxpayers' money to bill it. When I was there on the beautiful day of all the beautiful words that they said that never come true, burn tires, burn metal, burn everything. That's what's for. Taxpayers believed in that, and that wasn't true. To this day, the city gets charged every year a fee for not having enough waste. If you buy one plant that we taxpayers paid for and now the city is getting fined, how can you justify fining the city when you tell us we can throw away at your part, at the power plant that we own? That's the problem. Every single year, they don't take tires now. In my district, every beach to Makaha, we get millions of tires in the ocean and on the side streets because now the convenience centers don't take tires. They don't burn refrigeration, the plastic, they don't take bed frames, they don't take, excuse me, they don't take box springs. So all of the things they're telling us what we cannot do. So the next question that I ask you, since we're on that subject of waste-to-energy, what do you know about the new waste-to-energy technology? Since you'd be coming in as a new energy person, do you know anything about the new technology of waste-to-energy plant?
Well, the most recent visit that I had was with Mayor Bennie just a few days ago, and they laid out several different technologies. Japan, of course, does an outstanding job. They actually have waste-to-energy facilities in residential areas. They're completely surrounded by buildings and they're able to do that effectively. So I was deeply impressed. I've actually visited those in Nishinomiya myself over the last 24 months and again, have been impressed with the state of the technology and hope that at some point Hawaii can have something of that quality.
The reason why I bring this up is because I can send you the information later. I have some questions, but I'll give them to my colleagues. This is why I say that is because the waste-to-energy plant that I had proposed to my colleagues and to the rest of the senators, this plant is right next to an ocean and it's looked like one beautiful building. So, and the CO2s and very much coming out is almost zero to none. And the ash that some of my colleagues in the house was concerned about, the ash will get moved over with the magnet, take all the metals out and they'll be used in construction material. So it won't go in the landfill. Reason for this new technology that we're trying to introduce here to the islands is because we don't want no more landfills in our backyard. We have all the pilau on our side of the island. We need new technology, new technology. I'll give you for the Chair.
Thank you. I just never like leave you out because once Senator King get a hold of the mic, but you might not have another chance. You sure? Okay, thank you, Senator King.
It's so juicy, that's why I was.
I feel like I'm being set up here. Thank you very much for being here. You talk about, and you did also just talk about clean hydrogen, and you were with DBED. Were you there when Ted Liu was, was the?
So I came in actually in the very last year. I was hired to, under Ara, to set up a loan fund. So.
So you didn't do anything with energy?
Pardon me?
You didn't do anything with energy?
No, I did not.
Okay, because I recall that they had a contract for hydrogen.
Yes.
A hydrogen contract, which we did an investigation on. It was a mess and I wanted to know what happened to that contract and what happened to the hydrogen program that we paid millions of dollars for. Do you recall?
No, that was before my time.
Okay, because it was finally awarded to Koholala and I think it was $8.7 million for hydrogen back then, which was, you know, the leading so-called energy, and yet here we are, you know, a decade later, and I don't know how we spend this kind of money, how we have these RFPs awarded, and then I don't know that we have anything to show for it.
Yeah, unfortunately, that never ended up at the Energy Office while I was there previously.
Okay, how do we, how do we keep from having those kinds of things happen as we go forward?
Well, several things. I mean, you raise an extremely important point about the process under which energy programs should be developed. One of them has to do with procurement, making sure it's fair and open, transparent. And we do have a good back ourselves, a good back office team that does that. But we also have to contribute to the rules for competitive bidding by the utility and by the utilities, and we participate in those dockets and that's critically important. But I think, you know, the bigger question is about how do we not repeat mistakes? You know, how do we make sure that we get out in front of the market? And it's hard for government to do that. What we do is we are now forming more partnerships with, with the industry and on this hydrogen hub effort, there will be more than 50 partners that are part of that. And having the innovations that are being developed and having that openly discussed is really important. So it's just not a small group of people in the back room kind of making decisions on these really important investments. And I think we'll figure out a way actually to have discussions with public, particularly if we're going to be using, let's say, geothermal to generate electricity to produce hydrogen. We have to spend more time, may take us an extra 12 months before we start to actually produce anything, but if we don't do that, I think there will be suspicion about how we went about doing it.
So how do we learn from that if nobody even remembers that contract and the money that we spent? Do we have a report? Does DBED have a report on the hydrogen RFP that was awarded to Koholala? I think it was $8.7 million? Do we even have, I mean, right, we need to look at what, what the money was spent on, what we learned from it, and if we're going to go forward because, you know, everybody has a good idea and they want to do an RFP, and then 10 years later, we look back and say, what did we spend this money on?
I'll be happy to look into it.
Also, in your testimony or your questionnaire that you answered, under clean transportation, you say, "I initiated an assessment of Hawaii's approach to reducing fossil fuel in transportation by revaluing HCEI roadmap on transportation." So what was the, what was the outcome of that?
So there were, out of all these different tactics, there were really over 100 of them that were originally evaluated. There were 22 that we thought might pass political muster and I would say about a half dozen of them are actually being worked on by Department of Transportation. Some of it has to do with transit-oriented design, some of it's with EV incentives, EV charging stations, and some other measures. I can tell you that overall, I completed that study and it was released in 2015 and I left the Energy Office in 2016. I was disappointed there wasn't further action on working with the communities and the broader stakeholders to actually deploy those tactics. I thought a lot of them made a lot of sense. But, you know, the thing about transportation is that unlike electricity where you can mandate the RPS on two utilities, you have to deal with 1.4 million vehicles that are owned by individuals. So you have to come up with different strategies to make that work and it was a lot harder. But we do have teams now that are actively engaged in that and they are actually performing pieces of that study, but we will do it a lot more strategically now. I think there's a lot of work to do to follow up that with that ICCT report that you mentioned, which I thought was a good report.
Well, again, you know, just your statement that you're disappointed because you left and it didn't get followed up on. I mean, that's what happens in government, right? We have somebody there, take the initiative or whatever, and then they leave and then the ball gets dropped. And, you know, we spend time and money and effort and then it gets dropped. And now we're back here now talking about this and I, every time there's a change, I don't know how we, how we plan for that or how we stay on top of it and how we hold people accountable. You also, you also talked about the, we established, the legislature adopted Act 164 on the Hawaii multi-unit dwelling EV charging working group that you chaired.
Yes.
And again, what became of that? Because we have bills enough back in 2015, right? And we have bills about there's just not enough charging stations. Should there be more charging stations? You know, there's all these concerns. So here we are, what, eight years, seven years later, and we're still talking about the same things.
Well, definitely, that was a really interesting working group and there were one or two legislative matters that were proposed. One of them involved trying to direct some of the public benefits fees towards rebates for the building owners so that they could actually make those transformer upgrades. A lot of the buildings actually would have, it turned out to be quite costly to be able to upgrade it to have series of 60 amp sort of charging, you know, chargers in these buildings. So it turned out to not be a real trivial thing to actually do these upgrades. And I think the biggest issue, and I think that the ones that didn't make progress, I think some of the buildings actually went forth and put in these level two chargers that don't take as much energy, but to actually put in fast chargers like the ones you have at your home, that would require more upgrades. And I think we're going to have to follow up and direct some of this federal funding that we have now to cover fixed costs like this to be able to make some progress on multi-dwelling units. And I think more importantly, on workplace charging, because that's what, that happens, most people are at work in the middle of the day when we have this oversupply of solar, and that's really when you need to be plugging in. I think the multi-dwelling unit actually has some limitations because you don't want them charging when they come home, because that's really not the right time. So I think it's much more important. I think we learned also from that multi-dwelling task force was that that wasn't the end-all. There was a supposition that that's what really needed to happen, and I think it was quite clear that there's limitations to how much you should be able to charge at these dwellings when it'd be better to charge at work.
And the thing is though, you can charge like after midnight.
That's right.
6:00 a.m., which is a better time. So there are timers on there. But then, you know, a lot of these ones at the shopping centers where employees get hold of a charger and they sit there all day long or other people come in and since there, there's no limit. So there needs to be some kind of accountability and, yeah, and enforcement if this is to work. So I hope those are things that you're going to take up and seriously look at because otherwise, how we move forward with getting more people on an electric vehicle. And by the way, I do have an electric vehicle.
Well, thank you. That's very good.
Yeah, and I do charge at homes. Thank you. After nine.
After nine. That's crazy.
So along the same lines of what Senator came out to say, I do park in the EV stall until she decided to make a bill that I cannot park my gas car in there.
That wasn't me?
But yeah, so I was like, okay, fine, even though we're paying with taxpayer dollars, but, you know, along that line, I wanted to ask, you know, because there's been a lot of projects, energy projects that are out there, and what I have been dealing with is that while we transition out from different types of energy and solar, once it's installed, the jobs become an issue. Workforce is no longer needed in most cases. Will you engage with the different labor or workforce or unions to have that conversation on how we can transition workforce of existing energy companies into us not basically having workforce disappear while we have renewable energy projects on the table?
Yeah, thank you, Senator. I think, Chair, I think that's actually one of the more important things that we'll be doing now that we weren't doing before. And we became the energy lead on the Good Jobs Hawaii effort with working with community colleges. And we just recently hired someone to lead that effort and we'll have sort of an extended team with our wayfinders to actually go do outreach in the communities, identify people that would, and actually to encourage people to go through these programs with the community colleges. And one of our goals, new goals is to have, I would like to see at the end of the four years, 1,000 people go through that program. That would be, to me, a real big accomplishment.
So, so with that, what were the engagements? So with that, will the engagement be in consideration of the different labor unions that represent some of these workers? With that conversation?
Absolutely. Yes.
One other. So Hawaii has set a goal of having a hundred percent renewable energy by 2045. How far along do you think Hawaii is in reaching that goal?
Well, you know, the truth of the matter is that we have six independent grids. And each one is different, really fundamentally different. You know, we're all very excited and happy that Kuaia Island Utility Cooperative is at seventy percent today. And, you know, when price volatility happened because of the Ukraine war, prices only, the rates only went up by five percent. Whereas in Molokai, they went up by forty percent because there's only nineteen percent renewable there. The planning effort in some of the places that haven't made progress is to make sure that they're probably more efficient and effective ways. And also it has to, this gets back to, I think, Senator Kim, one of Senator Kim's points, or quite in my answer to her about procurement. We have to figure out ways to reduce risk for developers that they can, and have such strong community support for the plans, that we're going to get better bids, more cost-effective bids, so that we can actually achieve these projects on time and they won't go away after six years. We've had a number of false starts. And I think Senator Wakai also mentioned another one of those false starts. Once he starts something, I do believe there is somewhat of an obligation to follow through. And I think, you know, in terms of Hawaii County, you know, they have a diverse energy mix. We're going to help them, I hope, be able to have greater community discussions and sort of complete the picture with perhaps, if the community supports it, more geothermal, obviously hydro, and more solar, and solar and batteries as well. And we're now exploring hydrogen in that mix as well. So there are definitely tools in the toolkit. We just have to kind of understand what's going on in each island and assist where appropriate. And then also kind of take advantage of these. There's going to be a pool of funds over the next five years that if we don't apply for it, we will not get it. It will go to other states. So we must, I feel it's an obligation, we do that effectively. And if we do that, we can cover some of those fixed costs. It would have been difficult for the utility and for the rate payer to kind of do. So I think it's appropriate for us to seek that. And we're committed to do that.
So I think you've actually probably one of many that have had challenges on outreach in the community. I know when you took on the challenge to me with the Molokai Clean Energy Committee, like most departments, they have literally shied away or walked away from no agreement between gathering of community members for consent. So thank you for that. I think that's a huge challenge that probably could rub off some of the other departments. But, you know, with that being said, thank you for that answer. I really wanted to hear what you had to say about that. I know we're running on time.
Just a few more.
Senator Favella.
Please. We already talked about this earlier, I wasn't here, but since the closure of the AES plan, the energy cost, of course, has been very through the roof for the residents. I had asked Hiko, who makes extremely tons of money, probably considering this capital, money they make off us, to offset the costs at that time. And of course, the answer was no. Going forward, you know, what action would you take to reduce the increase of the Hiko energy cost of the residences? You know, what can you do as coming in as the energy chair?
Well, one of the things that I'm doing is a part of my routine function in this early stage is to meet with some of the other independent power producers and to see whether or not it's possible to pick up some of their very effective power generation, which could, you know, sort of fill in some of the gas for AES. Probably not at as low a cost, but in a good way. One of them is Kalailo Partners, which has an extremely efficient combined cycle generation unit. So I want to explore some of those traditional routes, as well as looking at some of these other things that we're trying to do to... You know, part of the picture will continue to try to improve efficiency. Because if you do that, then that's the cheapest way you actually sort of back off demand. So, you know, as led here Carolyn Carl and Hawaii Energy, we're going to definitely beef up efforts to support some efficiency, as I mentioned, energy savings, performance contracts, and other things.
Because I have a very, very concern on the previous energy chair came to here where you're sitting. Didn't have to ask you too many questions, but the question that I had asked him, if there was a way, as him being the energy chair, because I asked him, was it a federal decision or was it a state decision? He said it was a state decision. Clearly what Senator Wakai said he did. So I asked him, as a role as the energy chair, what role did he play in trying to prevent it from being closed? Come to back to us and ask us for an extension of two years? Since he already knew during COVID that those solar companies wasn't up to par unless he was sleeping at the wheel. That's a different story. But anyway, the bottom line is, he used the word, he misspoke to me outside here, not on the TV. He used the word misspoke. Because he told me in the hearing that he talked to the subject chair about this to try to extend it. And he said, it was too late. Well, he didn't misspoke, he lied to me. Because he also told the subject chair that he'd already left this meeting to talk to Senator Wakai and let him know that he told me that in the meeting. And quote-unquote, Senator Wakai said, "So what did you transfer, say? You want me to lie for you?" So these are the things that we have to be very careful when it comes to the taxpayers' money. I was very upset that my community is suffering. When you say we don't have rollout, we don't have enough firm energy. Out of all these programs and all of this stuff, how much firm energy do these solar farms, windmills actually producing right now? How much firm energy?
Well, again, it's the definition of firm energy, but some of the arrays with batteries are providing enough dispatchable energy up to a certain percentage.
And the reason why I bring that up, because you say we didn't. Well, in my community, Everbeach, St. Anna, Cooley, we had blackouts. Not just rolling, we had blackouts where a father get up, everything's off, icebox is defrosting. So it's not like it was just a few minutes. We have, you know. And then I heard, I don't know what news it was, the Hawaiian Electric came out and said, "Oh, if, you know, we can get guys to come up with better ideas and get away from solar and windmills because it's not working." You as being the energy chair, the question that I have for you is that, what role will you play in renewable energy projects built today? And do you have any? The previous chair before you in 2019, 2020, told me that it wasn't going to have, in a hearing with Senator Pai Keheli, he said we wasn't going to have any more windmills. But the reason why I ask this is because as you will be the renewable, the energy chair, how would you feel? And what role would you have with, and would you support offshore wind energy projects?
Very interesting that you asked that question. Plan on meeting with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management when I'm in Washington in the summer to discuss plans for that. Because they are faced with projects that want permits. And to talk about what's the appropriate way to do that. And as you know, there's some obstacles with designation of available space that the Department of Defense would support in OPACON. And so we have to resolve some of those issues. But if we're going to, you know, as you, I'm sure you well know, if you really want to balance the power of solar, wind can do that. Because it can blow, you know, at all times of the day. And particularly in places where there's really high capacity factor, and some of these are offshore, you know, you could really balance that and create some essentially, not going to replace, it's not become dispatchable, but it will essentially strengthen the grid. So I think it should be considered. And I know that there are some really interested parties in pursuing that. So we do intend to look at that very carefully.
Okay, by putting these windmills in the water, you think it would have a negative impact on tourism?
It has to be done responsibly, and I think it has to be done in areas where it wouldn't.
Okay, so you talked about the military and all of those guys, yeah?
Yeah.
A big impact that's going to be on the native Hawaiian people.
Right.
Who use the ocean for their life.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be totally telling you true, I am hundred percent against those windmills in ocean. Because nothing that you can tell me, you can tell me about the wind, okay? The best wind is coming from Hawaii Kai, that side. You see any windmills, any solar projects there? Anything else? Zero? Nothing. So the question I'm asking to you, before you go talk to these guys in Washington, you better come to our community. Because they wanted to put Adam in and ask us, I mean, a team said, hundred thirty-four windmills from Everbeach to Whanau in our waters, five miles out. That's going to change our lives. A platform is mopping in this building. And it's not going to even connect to land, it's going to connect to batteries. How is that going to help us who goes out there and live and they tell us, hey, so much feed from the windmill or the platform you can fish? Those are the things that concern me because I don't give a rip about the military state. I like them out in the bronya, the only thing that tells what food do. But it doesn't concern us. It always concern them, polluting our community. That will pollute our ocean. When it breaks, what you think the debris going to come? Everbeach, St. Anna, Cooley, Whanau. It hurt our industry. This is not the way to go. Because I'm going to tell you right now, Japan, you talk about Japan, talk about China, talk about other countries. Question is, how come we're not entertaining the wave technology? They said that twenty years ago, I heard about this. How come we're not, I don't hear not one person says Scotland to you, talking about wave energy? Because that wave energy, when you make the platform, it not only produce a lot of great energy, during a storm, it covers itself. You're in Hawaiian Electric, during these big heavy storms and rain, you couldn't get any of the power from the solar farms and windmill. So why would we want to go into the ocean when we have natural disasters, tsunami warnings, and high waves? So that's the stuff that we got to think about. Because we're always talking about, we're like, oh, green. To what extent? To extinct us? So please think about it as you go forward, as you being, if you get comfortable to be the energy chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
One quick question. I think Senator Favella asked the most important question of the afternoon, which was the cost to consumers. And, you know, when you look at the PPEs that are coming in, from what I understand, solar plus batteries coming in at about eleven cents per kilowatt hour, far cheaper than petroleum was or is. But instead of the prices going down as we put more renewables on the grid, it's gone in the complete opposite direction. We went from thirty-six cents per kilowatt hour to forty-two cents. So in your mind, I mean, if Hiko is buying at eleven cents per kilowatt hour and charging all of us as Hiko customers forty-two cents per kilowatt hour, is that justifiable? And if it's not, what would you, as the state energy officer, do to drive down the cost so it's closer to the national average of twelve cents per kilowatt hour, instead of having us all burdened with paying almost four times the national average for electricity costs in the state?
Extremely important points, Senator Wakai. The energy costs of, you know, kilowatt hour of rate payer cost is less than half of the overall bill, you know, the energy cost component. So there's the poles and the wires and transformers and, you know, essentially the grid, the grid management. We have to reduce the cost of grid management. But I think the single biggest way that we can kind of deal with the energy cost is to, and this is one area, again, looking at KIUC, a hundred percent may not be, you know, there may be disagreement at this extremely high levels, but we know that at seventy percent, it's going to reduce oil price volatility and it will help rate pairs. So we have to get more of these projects than in place economically. And one thing that we can help do is reduce the timeframe that these projects get built from five years to three years. So that's going to be a big part of our push, is to come up with strategies to do that. And I think that will help reduce the cost of energy, renewable energy.
But how in the world, if Hiko is buying energy for cheaper today than they were, let's say, five, ten years ago, can that increase the cost? Not as if they reinvented the grid, it's the same old grid, dilapidated as it is. I don't quite understand how it is that their PPEs coming down and the cost to all of us go up. I mean, somehow these lines need to cross at a certain point. And what can you do to help us other than trying to get more renewables online? Even if we get more renewables online, the tracker could show that, that doesn't matter. The rate pair is still taking the shorts.
Well, I mean, again, Hawaiian Electric hasn't gotten to the point that KIUC has. So that when it gets to that level, I think there will be a fundamental shift. But we also have to be extremely mindful of how effective they are about the grid transformation part. And we will be there weighing in on those dockets.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gliss. We are going to go for, we're going to switch over to GM 534.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is GM 534. First person up, Chris Tariyasu, oh, Governor Green in support, Chris Tariyasu.
Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chris Tariyasu with DEBET. Strong support for standing testimony. It's been a pleasure working with Dane. He's a very sharp individual, has task-oriented, and very good for the department. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dennis Ling.
Yes, Chair. Dennis Ling stands strong support of this nominee.
Thank you. Next up, Maria Lucio Pasqual.
The new Chair, Vice Chair, and I first up with the committee. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the support for GM 534 to support the nomination for our Deputy Director. My name is Lucy Pasqual, and I've been in the DEBET ASO since January thirteenth of 2023. Yeah, so within just a couple of months that I had known Mr. Wicker and working closely with him, I could see that he has vast experience and skill set for working collaboratively with ten attached agencies and four core programs of DEBET, being able to identify their mission and align them with the overall DEBET strategies and governor's priorities. So these accomplishments transcend to advocating funds for payroll, other current expenses, and necessary capital improvement projects that sustain the department's operations so that we can better serve the people of Hawaii. So for this and other reasons, it's strongly urged for his confirmation as DEBET Deputy Director.
Thank you. Next up, John DeFrise. Thank you. Next up, Jimin Akatani. Thank you. Next up, Daniel Ordin Dink, Ordin Dinker. Thank you. Next, Len Higashi. Thank you. Next up, Don Cheng for Gilead. Thank you. Next up, Denise Matsubara, Matsubara, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Members of the Committee. Denise Sari Matsubara for HHFDC. As Executive Director for HHFDC, it's really a privilege for me to express my strong support for the confirmation of Dane Wicker. During my time in serving in various capacities, I found Dane Wicker to be a very dedicated and conscientious individual, and he's driven for results. It's hard to find in government. When you have those individuals, you got to hang on to them. Economic workforce development and energy efficiency and affordable housing are critical issues for the state. With Dane's skill set and his experience, he is the right person for the job. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Denise. Next up, Jay Bhutte in support. Guanyama Moro Law. Thank you, Guanyama. Next up, Mark Dick. Thank you. Gregory Barbour on Zoom.
Hi, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, Greg Barber from the Natural Energy Lab. And I stand on my testimony and strong support. Stand on my testimony and strong support, Dane, he sees the big picture, he has practical uh realistic assessment and straightforward thinking, thank you.
Thank you. Uh next up, Department of Health. Okay, in support, Douglas Murdock, Chief Information Officer in support. Uh so I got numerous people in support, um Louis Alavaria, Sabrina Ne- Nacer, Tom Johnson, Sharon Hertz, Scott Glenn, Gary Suganam, Uma, Akeem. Who wants, so Executive Director of Public Housing, uh David in support, Derek Kawakami in support, Michael Tahili in support, uh Chris Delaney in person, are you here? Nope, in support, Michael Minikata. Thank you, thank you, Michael. Uh Aaron Mahi in support, not here, oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh Leroy Chin- Chin Tio Junior in person in support, um Mufi Hanami in support, Chris West in support, Dustin Dawson in support, Jeffrey Mueller, you know, you know, pile guys in support. I can give you guys the paper as I look at them later. Scott Murakami in person.
Hello, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, I'm Scott Murakami. I'm here in my individual capacity, testifying in strong support for Deputy Director Wicker. Um first off, I did wanna, I'm gonna stand on my written testimony that you have, but I did wanna take a moment to just kind of thank Dane for his twenty, near over twenty-two years of public service. Especially in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, yes, I've testified in, or provided for you in my written testimony and as other people prior to me have testified, Dane is incredibly intelligent, he's very quick in grasping complex issues. And that was tremendously helpful to us at the start of COVID. When we saw the degradation of the UI system, you know, I tried to explain to everybody what the situation was and it was people like Dane could understand the complexities and put it into a larger picture, that he could understand the challenges we face and also the solutions that we're using to remedy it. So um in his capacity as the direct Deputy Director, I can tell you that his grasp of um cluster economic development is gonna tremendously help us, especially with his drive to gather it all, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Georgia Skinner. So Georgia, oh, Georgia left in support, um and then... Yeah, okay, Kenny, guys, I'm serious, like, you don't know, but um for the record, I have testimony all in support. Oh, anybody else, oh, sorry, go ahead, oh, Brian, I'm sorry, anybody else wanna testify that's here today?
I know you said this, I'm Chair, I did wanna speak on behalf of the farming community. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee, Brony Amora here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We are in strong support of the nominee. Uh we appreciate uh Dane's background, experience, work ethic, but he understands farming, he understands that farming is a business. And we're excited, we're optimistic on the growth of agriculture with, if uh Mr. Wicker is confirmed as a Deputy Director. I've personally known Dane for thirteen years, I've worked with him collaboratively on many agriculture issues. And again, we're excited and we urge the committee to confirm Mr. Wicker for Deputy Director of the Department of Business Economic Development towards him. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, go, go ahead, sorry.
Chair, just wanna stand in strong support of Dane Wicker as Deputy Director. Great, not the one I see.
Thank you, you was there, you were just like, oh, thank you.
Uh, anybody else?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, the committee, Angela Melody, I'm testifying on behalf of cares. Um in support of Dane Wicker, um he is very passionate about his work and he's a good parent, so um yep, in support of his nomination, thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Anybody else wanna testify in support? Dane.
Hello, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, Senators Kim and Favella. I'm honored by and humbled by this opportunity to serve the Governor Green administration and the state as a Deputy Director for the Department of Business Economic Development Tourism. I also wanna thank all those who took time out of their schedules to prepare and submit testimonies supporting my nomination. It's, your words of encouragement are humbling and very much appreciated, so mahalo. Through my career in the State Senate and in the city and county of Honolulu, I served in capacities that provided me to learn and look at resources to put together a larger piece of the puzzle. Uh in my role, I plan to work collaboratively with our attached agencies and programs and start breaking down the silos between our um departments and attached agencies. I plan to expand economic development outside of Honolulu and the urban core and focus planning and resources in our rural communities and on our neighbor islands. And working with the DIBET Director, we are putting together a strategic direction. Currently looking at the top five sectors in Hawaii, we are at real estate, government, hospitality and food services, healthcare and social assistance and retail trade. Reading completed studies and previously drafted strategic plans within the department, it is helping us craft a strategic direction. Reviewing the data provided by our research analysis and economic development division, it is helping us to identify where we can move the GDP needle on industries that match our culture and resources. These areas include exports and trade and increasing import substitution, increasing the competitiveness of Hawaii's businesses by providing them facilities, equipment and a skilled workforce. Tech and innovation, we need to expand and grow our manufacturing industries, our energy industry and our creative industries, and we also must strengthen Hawaii's supply chain. DIBET Strategic Direction focuses on four pillars to expand our economy and grow our tax base. Pillar one, economically sustainable Hawaii, we need to include how to be economically sustainable, not just talk about sustainability. Businesses have to survive. We have to help with their business plans and know what resources and what assistance or incentives may help these industries scale up. Pillar two, creative and innovative industries. We have to adopt best practices, we have to push innovative industries that are appropriate for Hawaii. Hawaii can become an energy think tank when we have to leverage geothermal, O-Tech, hydrogen. We have to expand our cottage industries through ITech and value added. Pillar three, education and workforce development. Focus on workforce development by establishing career pathways, working with the University of Hawaii, P20, DOE and our unions. And we have to identify strengths and weaknesses. You know, there is a story with HTDC that was shared with me by our Executive Director, Len Higashi. A forty-five thousand dollar investment turned into a three hundred million dollar venture. We have macro interests here, that's our strength. A weakness we did not see is that we did not prepare a skilled workforce to meet the increase in services and those positions, not all of them, but some of them were outsourced from out of state. And the last pillar is housing, it's a longstanding issue for both affordable and workforce and it's a critical component of our economic cluster. Lastly, with economic clusters, we wanna promote and collaborate between our programs. DIBET will drive the projects partnering with sister agencies and departments and will work with the administratively attached agencies as they have all the tools that can assist with planning, design and development, a cradle to a grave approach for our economic development. We have to conduct an assessment of infrastructure and assets, what land, facilities are state-owned or should DIBET acquire and critical infrastructure to support the programs and goals and benchmarks. In closing, I wanna thank you for allowing me to share my summary and how DIBET can help Hawaii be competitive. Now moving to questions, mahalo.
Thank you, Dane. So thank you, Favella, I I just don't like you be left out or cut off, like, in the rest of all the hearings, so I don't like you.
I really appreciate you for that, thank you, because you know I'm a man of few words, Kenny. Just a few, just a few questions, sorry. Uh thank you, Dane, um so, um, um, sorry. As the various agencies or divisions that you already spoke about in DIBET, if confirmed, how how would you be as a deputy in proposing and, you know, I guess, uh putting everything together, um, you know, you know, in a better and a responsible way?
So the Director and I, we've been looking at our attached agencies, um they can, they can become champions of economic clusters. Um within the pillars and meeting with the Senate, Senate and colleagues, we're learning about economic projects within your communities that are appropriate. We plan to do that if confirmed through site visits and interim. But we're asking our attached agencies to step up and become the champions. So for example, uh food innovation network would be Agribusiness Development Corporation. We need to identify land, whether ADC already has it or doesn't have it, if we need to acquire it. What other type of powers do we need from other attached agencies, whether it's HHFDC that can acquire um already existing buildings for workforce housing? With Creative Media, we're looking at them as a driver for a film studio complex out in West Oahu, but also what type of agencies like HCDA has a district out there and partnering with them. And then continuing on with workforce housing and then the workforce pathway with DOE, UH West Oahu and the unions. Um if it becomes land-based, we need to look at which state agency we can partner with, so it's all about collaboration and partners. A lot of our attached agencies include powers and exemptions that can help in moving these projects forward. There kind of just needs to be a maestro and that's where we're moving our framework with our program. And we meet weekly with our managers to discuss how to move forward on that.
The second one, but I'm gonna read them anyway, since it's in my book, um my last question. Your questionnaire responded and mentioned that one of the DIBET's top priorities would be receiving funding for thirteen point two million dollars to purchase Kalailoa personal for the economic structure, including a creative media, uh creative uh media industry and film state energy project, dry and or cold storages facility. Could you provide more detail about this Kalailoa land area that you are going to be purchasing for the project?
So it's a little, it's really early, it's um, we're in talks now, we've talked with the landowners, they are interested, they're doing their due diligence before they list it. But that idea came up um from looking at the creative media industry. Uh UH West Oahu is pursuing a uh their film studio. And for us, we want to look at asset, if there's capacity to do more stages in Kalailoa, we wanna focus the hub there. We're looking at the approach of not doing incentives upfront, so we, I, you know, it is, it's not unfamiliar to this body about the tax credit. But the tax credit, I believe, can be used as an incentive to draw work into a targeted area. If um, we'll have to look at the census tract and see if there's also an enterprise zone opportunity out there. But if there's not enough capacity to do more than, let's say, half a dozen still film studios out in Kalailoa at this point in time. And talking with the ag industry, there is a need for cold storage and dry storage facilities across the state. So we could repurpose it, if DIBET holds the asset, we can look at other options to repurpose our assets. And that is something I experienced in working on legislative projects here at my time at the State Senate. When the state had an asset, the first idea didn't work out, um maybe better for worse, but now it's turned into a food process production facility. Original idea, I wanted it to be a warehouse or food storage.
Just a quick comment, so I just wanted to let you know, if you're not sure, um fifty-three acres um was purchased by Costco's from Ho Peely to do some of the stuff, warehouses, um cold storages that they're gonna wanna rent and uh lease out in that area, fifty-three acres um right above um Ho Peely. So just wanted to give that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Favella, that was the quickest comment ever, but thank you for that. Right on, Senator Kean. Oh, no, just figure it out, my way down. Thank you, Dwayne, Dane, why we say Dwayne? Um you should put a D after your D, no. Um so you're the deputy, right? So what would your role be as deputy? What do you see your role is as deputy for this department?
Thank you. So my, my role, I saw where I can always help and support the Director as well as the program managers. Where I do see maybe a void or where we can step up, that's where I assert myself or insert myself. But it's always working with the Director and the program managers.
When you say void, what do you mean with a void?
It could be where I've recognized maybe we're not implementing or we're short on delivering an economic project. I like to propose some ideas for the Director or the program managers to help undertake and perform.
What if the Director doesn't agree with it?
At the end of the day, it's the Director and I would have to support the Director's decision.
What specific assignments have you been given by the Director? And which, uh which specific um things that you have done have been more taken as as initiative on your part? Differentiate between the two?
Sure, yep. So specific assignments is internally leading the programs and direction on where we're headed, that we develop the moving the needle plan. Um I did approach the Director asking if I could work on economic clusters and with his approval, I've embedded that and included it into the moving the needle. It's the same or similar projects um I, that I proposed to the Director, I proposed to some of Governor Green's transition team members when I applied, it was specific economic. And so I approached and asked if I could work on these projects and with approval, he's allowed me to put together this strategic direction and we get input weekly from our managers.
So again, what was the specific assignments you've been given, leading programs?
So right now, anything other than the hydrogen hub, the stadium development, uh prior to that was the HDA contracts and then housing. Um those, some of those were inherited by the department that the Director um undertook and spoke to Stan. And then I took on not other economic projects that I see fit for DIBET and its attached agencies.
So did you have any role in the HTA or FTEES?
No, I did not.
So that would be another thing to do with that. Okay, thank you for now.
Thank you, Chair. Now, Dane, ever since you came to the Senate in two thousand and ten, I found you to be so easy to work with. You're wickedly smart, you are embracing innovation all the time, super collaborative. And we heard today, you're a good parent. And that's important, because I know you want the best for Pierce, your son, uh to chase whatever dreams he has. And what I also appreciate about you is that you're honest. And I read through your responses to Chair Decoy's questionnaire. Um and you point out that one of the weaknesses within DIBET is a lack of a strategic plan. And for years, our approach to economic development has just been kind of haphazard, piecemeal, capocotti, all over the place. And that's why we really haven't moved off of tourism. And seems like you're the right guy to help us finally uh get some traction. I mean, the previous administration talked about a navigator, talked about Hawaii two-point-oh, spent millions of dollars in uh preparing us for absolutely nothing. Uh and so I I have so much more confidence in you and Mr. Sadiassu to get us to to a better place. And I'm looking through your packet of information and you talked to today about um how you wanna uh grow different sectors. So I'm looking at this GDP comparison two thousand, excuse me, nineteen ninety-nine to twenty nineteen. And then you show some growth areas and some areas where there has been economic decline. Growth areas inclusive of healthcare, construction, transportation, uh professional scientific technical services. The areas in our economy over the past twenty years that are going in the opposite direction and declining are trade, uh utilities, manufacturing and agriculture. So when you try to figure out like what the strategic plan is going to be for the state uh through your role as DIBET Deputy Director, what's your take? I mean, do you wanna emphasize growth opportunities or do you wanna try to mitigate some of these declining industries in the state?
I don't have the answer on how to mitigate the declining. Um in speaking with Dr. Tian, my first approach was if I were to focus on value added, would that move the needle in agriculture? And I, what I learned from that conversation, it might touch trade, it might touch manufacturing, it could touch exports. I don't have all the solutions or answers outside of Oahu and meeting with the neighboring senators, there's a lot of alignment. Agriculture seems to be one, film was another one, I have yet to learn more about what are those issues are. But the, my focus to, to maybe reverse the down, the declining trend is to figure out what is needed with our industries, maybe over the next hurdle. So one experience I had, um and it used to be with DIBET was the Hawaii Strategic Development Corps. They would focus funds on startups and what they call a value debt, seed funding to get over. That value debt I found is similar with our cottage industry. So in talking with our business development support division who focuses on exports, my question is, how do we increase exports? And then working backwards from those type of vendors, what is it that they need? They might need a certain type of equipment and we can work with HTDC and bringing in that through the manufacturing. They might need a facility, DIBET has attached agencies that can purchase land and develop assets. But there's gotta be some point where we're working with our current economy and asking them, what's gonna help you scale up or what's gonna take you uh to the next level? And that is part of our plan is, okay, if it's an asset, if it's an equipment in our budget ask or legislation, we wanna change or adapt the law or come in with that request. I hope that one year, if that's too aggressive, but in two years, we can... I hope that one year, if that's too aggressive, but in two years, we can use the metrics to see if we bought a piece of the equipment or if we built a facility on neighbor island. What happened to that GDP? How many more jobs did we create? Where do we go on exports? So, so we gotta put together that plan and track that.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you touched just now on neighbor islands because I just see that the, the past practices with D-Bed has been very Oahu-centric in terms of, of building whatever is energy, manufacturing, all Oahu-centric. And we know that neighbor islands are, they have a lot more land, perhaps a lot more access to, to water, cheaper energy sources. What's your view on D-Bed's role in pushing more economic development to the neighbor islands?
Definitely, we're, we just had a meeting this week with their managers and the director and I um, asked the status or encourage all of our program managers to start doing trips off Oahu. Um, figure out ways to engage with legislators off Oahu and learn about their districts, what's appropriate. And we wanna see those reports. We do a lot of travel. We do a lot of conferences outside of state. But I think we need to focus and put more of that effort to the neighbor islands. We'll learn from them, the best practices. We can't, I mean, even if we get one project per county within the first four years, I would think that would be significant. I know that's not a great benchmark when you're talking about department that's responsible for all statewide economic development. But implementation, and we talked about that, it's not focused on planning or studies, it's focused on implementation, basically shoveling it down for two years.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Kim. Question. So you've worked with the Senate Budget Ways and Means Office. Um, and so as far as the budget for D-Bed, what was your role in prepping them for the budget as it came before the Ways and Means Committee?
So when we were prepping the budget, um, around one, she bound to, um, I worked with director. Um, advised that we should uh, put together meetings to learn the budgets. Um, what was missing, I think on my end too, is there was no clear real ask on benchmarks. Um, so it's hard to kind of justify yet right now. And it, and it was due to timing. I mean, we started mid-December. And I, I'm well aware of the budget timeline come January, um, to really narrow down how the budget requests are tied to benchmarks and goals. Um, a corrective course we had taken is we started doing strategic planning meetings with our departments now. So it's a little late, but now to understand what the goals and benchmarks are as we're coming up to the second half of the budgets.
So looking, looking back on the presentation for the budget by D-Bed. Um, and all the ask that was presented before us. What, what is your take on that? I mean, again, you know, you spent a lot of time with Ways and Means. You know the budget. Were you really asked as to what's the best way to approach that and how to deal with all of this ask?
Yes, and I would say I was offering a lot of guidance to on my end.
But it didn't materialize in front of the committee?
That was a, yes, that was a, from my experience coming from Ways and Means, that was, that was a challenge putting that together, I guess.
Okay. I guess I just was expecting a lot more in the sense that, you know, of the experience you have. And if that was not utilized, then I'm wondering going forward, how much of your experience will be utilized as a deputy? Is that a fair question?
That is fair. And I do think about that post-wan and moving forward and how to correct that. So some of the requests we've already done is working backwards from December thirty-first to prepare. So when we do come in front of the committee on our supplemental budget, it's clear on what to ask for and how it ties into benchmarks and goals.
And prioritizing?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Oh, so, so thank you, Dean. And uh, you know, so, so I have a question. What were the biggest problems you saw at the city's Department of Planning and Permitting that caused delays for those seeking permits from the city? And can you tell us what fixes were needed to expedite permit approvals?
So when we were there, um, there were a few things. One, where the permitting and planning system was operating on two software programs that don't, from what I learned, that was told, don't talk to each other. So you need manual, a manual person behind clicking and moving this over. Um, with the current director, um, Dante Kunchio Puna, she's narrowed the scope. She focused on using internal staff, um, which helped build morale. But what were the low hanging fruit on just the checklist system? And they started a bot, an automated bot process. And they set deadlines on when they're gonna do X amount of steps. It was able to clear within, I think, we did about two to four weeks of just planning and setting this up. And then within two to three months, it was able to clear the backlog just out of the checklist. But then what happened, you solved one problem, you just moved the backlog to a second phase. But that phase was actually all manpower. So the second challenge that I saw, um, which the director was well aware of and trying to, and working to address was capacity. Um, that you need qualified people. And if, once you get qualified people, it would take six to twelve months just to train them up. But when you look at the workforce for any government or even private, it's challenging finding, finding, we're doing that now with our vacancies. We're still having a challenge as we try to fill our remaining thirty-plus vacant positions, qualified people.
So, so I guess you would say we're still in the same place we were, we, we are now and we worked in.
For, um, I did hear though on the, on the media that the TPP is going out with a RFP. And that would be a big problem solver by bringing in, like, consulting to work, um, we work this system.
Well, so first I'm looking at America's top states for business and Hawaii is ranked forty-six out of fifty. Of course, we always say we gotta improve ranking. What would you propose we do to improve the ranking? Knowing all the background that you have and then, um, you know, knowing that you will be the deputy of or uh, upon confirming. How's the working relationship with yourself as well as the appointee director for D-Bed? Because I always believe a, a good supportive, um, within its organizational department makes it healthy for us to move projects forward. What, what's that like?
We have a great relationship, working relationship. I, I, he has strengths in knowing and being like a child of D-Bed. This uh, HHFDC, HTA, in some time at HCD. So he is in depth on process and familiar with how they work, that culture. Uh, me bringing in my expertise or experience from the legislative body, I helped navigate. Um, to this point about the CNBC ranking, take it back, I think it was in twenty fourteen or fifteen when then I was working with Senator Cruz and he was the chair of the Economic Development Committee. We would watch this and we would see Hawaii go, it was always in the bottom ten. But a, um, a question, and if approved, they'd like to work on it. Actually, I was thinking just contacting them and saying, what are your metrics? How do you guys measure why Hawaii is ranked in the top bottom ten of business? And then try to align it with, is that, can our industries or where we go with our economic plan, would that help move us up? And at the end of the day, if they're using metrics that doesn't match our economic plan or we can't adapt it, then it's probably not a table I would refer to later. But figure out, okay, what is, is it, is it the salaries that we increase? Is it the unemployment rate that we bring down, the diversity? When we go back to the top five industries, does something else pop in as the top five and something else move out?
Well, well, cause I actually think we actually ranked fifty.
Fifty.
Only because just trying to get through the process of registering businesses and making it more a palatable welcoming of startups. It's been really a challenge. Um, you know, at this point, I would think that we'll try to streamline and follow up what you're doing. But, um, you know, we've always been bad for business. Um, some islands are just no welcome business. Um, you know, but a, at that rate, uh, you know, I appreciate, you know, um, the testimony and the background. Cause you have a lot of, uh, uh, recommendations as well as your resume speaks for itself, Dean, and I appreciate that. Um, if there's no more questions, I'd like to go to recess for decision.
We do one last comment, sorry.
Sure.
To that point, um, we've been, since coming on board, the program managers, it, all of our programs do a really good job. They've been very open and very creative and coming to the table and thinking of ways that shift the paradigm. I, um, just one of my recent meetings with two of our divisions and flushing out how we could increase imports, I'm sorry, increase exports. They looked at it and came back and said, hey, our platform is more informational. We should be proactively marketing. And so we have a follow discussion of that. But the energy and the morale there within all of our managers is very positive. This is, there's definitely, I think, a lot of opportunity with our program managers. So thank you.
Appreciate that, Dean. Um, hang on, hang on. Okay, um, so. Um, so. So we are gonna have a decision made on a one P M uh, agenda. Uh, first up, uh, GM five zero four, submitting for consideration and confirmation as a chief energy officer of Hawaii State Energy Office Governor Taro nominee Mark Gluck for a term to expire twelve seven, twenty twenty-six. My recommendation is to advise and consent. Uh, committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, um, vice chair will kai for the vote.
Chair Decoy?
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Fukunaga, to you, Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, second, uh, GM five three four is submitting for consideration and confirmation as a deputy director of Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. Governor Taro nominee Dane Becker for a term to expire twelve oh seven, twenty twenty-six. My recommendation is to advise and consent. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair will kai for the vote.
Chair Decoy?
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Fukunaga, to you, Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Congratulations to our nominees. And with that, we can adjourn this call. Hello and welcome to Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism. We have eight bills on our agenda. This meeting is being live streamed on YouTube. In the likely event that we have to rockier end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will convene, reconvene to discuss business at two P M on Thursday, March sixteen, twenty twenty-three in this room two to nine. Please note, we have a one-minute time limit per testifier. Okay, first up, HB one nine two, one nine two, relating to energy efficiency. First up, Kenneth Fink, Department of Health, uh, on Zoom.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai. Uh, I'm Phoenix Grange, representing the Director Fink in, in strong support of this measure. Um, the effect of this measure will be to both increase energy efficiency with the newer smaller LEDs, but also protect the environment and children from releases of mercury into the environment, which can cause um, significant uh, you know, uh, bad effects on both children and the environment. We strongly support this and um, think that we will see, people of Hawaii will see benefits removing this from the environment in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Mark Gluck.
Howard Wick, Hawaii State Energy Office. I second everything Department of Health said. And I point out that this brings us closer to one hundred percent freedom of choice.
Thank you. Next up, Leah Laramie in support, uh, Randy Manzoni in support. Tina Yamaki, uh, in person and in opposition, not here. Um, testifying for Blue Planet Foundation.
Sir, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jody Robinson will stand for testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next up, Carolyn Carr on Zoom.
I'm present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, next, Brian Fady, State Policy Manager on Zoom.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, members of the committee. Brian Fady with Appliance Standards Awareness Project. We have worked on this policy in other states as well. We stand by our written testimony and mainly just wanted to be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Jenna Matilla on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jenna Matilla on behalf of the Alliance for Automotive Innovation with comments on HB one ninety-two. Um, the auto innovators support the amendments that were made in the HD two version of this bill and respectfully ask that the committee pass this measure with the exemption for lamps installed as original equipment in motor vehicles intact, as there are no other alternatives for older motor vehicles. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. So, so Jenna, I think you said one eight two is one nine two, you know?
Yeah, one nine two, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, Michael Monekata in support. Uh, Ted Bowling in support. So again, we have numerous support for this uh, bill. Uh, is there, if there's anybody else wishing to testify, um, I will remind you, we gotta stop at three o'clock. And we have several bills to go through. Seeing none, members, any question? Okay, moving on to HB nine six three. Uh, first up, Chris.
I will stand as Chris Sadi, as the D-Bed Director. Uh, we stand in our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Louis Oliverio in support on budget finance.
Yeah, Sabrina Asar, Deputy Director, Department of Veteran Finance. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Next up, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Lou.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, sorry. Uh, Riley Fitch, talk you to the office of Lieutenant Governor. We stand in strong support on our written testimony.
Thank you. Next up, Daentry Bartold, told us.
Senator's support.
Oh, thank you. Can you please state your name?
Kylie.
Kylie, thank you, Kylie. Uh, next up, Garrett Yoshimi in support, Kirby Shaw in support. Uh, testifying on behalf of the chamber, Sherry Menor. Thank you, Sherry. Next up, Janine Suki on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, in support, uh, testifying for broadband HUI on Zoom.
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, Chair and Committee. We'd just like to, uh, stand in our testimony. We'd like to emphasize briefly that state appropriating, uh, its money, matching, some matching money gives flexibility in the options available. So, uh, we strongly support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, uh, Primary Care Association in support, Kelly Lopez. Kelly Lopez in support, uh, Kylie Swan.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon, sorry, Donna Lynn and Mr. Glenn. My name is Kylie Swan. My name is Kamis Kylie Swan. I'm a strong supporter of HB nine six three because people with disabilities need to get fast-forable wifi. If they can't afford to get one due to the tight budget, thank for allowing me to testify. Let me know if you have any questions. I love to ask any questions from you guys. Please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Limon Mikan in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Angela?
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair and the committee. I'm Angela Melanie Young, testifying on behalf of Cares, um, in strong support. And, um, so the benefits of digital equity and connectivity, um, continues to grow. And, um, the benefits are, there are a lot of benefits from getting connected. Um, here are some examples about, um, how connectivity can benefit, um, our society. So for example, economic development, um, education, healthcare, um, public safety, environmental sustainability, um, telework and urban revitalization. And of course, people with disabilities. Um, so especially for disabilities, it addresses, um, like, um, the apps. So a lot of the disabled people need advanced apps so that it can help them with their disabilities. Um, and such as those who are, um, who have like hearing, um, conditions. Um, can talk to each other with sign language. Yeah.
You can submit that.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, HB nine eight nine, relating to Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. First up, there are. H B nine eight nine relating to Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. First up, Director Chris Salia.
Standing, uh, strong support of this, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Gwen Yamamora Long. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Uh, you, okay, Senator Kim.
For the Director. So the last time we took this up, um, you gave us the breakdown after we had the hearing. So we didn't really have to ask questions. So now that we have the breakdown, uh, under moving services and related expenses, a hundred thousand dollars. And then you have temporary office rent and relocation expenses. Can you explain the difference with relocation expenses, moving services and related expenses?
So moving services, as from my understanding, working with our, um, Business Development Support Division and also our. Our affected agencies and core divisions, uh, there will be moving expenses that, uh, we have to bid out for that. And we have a quote, I think, that is, is here. And explain a little more detail, so.
Now, I just want to know what relocation expense, the difference between relocation expense, related expenses to the moving services. Cause relocation expenses is also moving?
Yeah, in this case, relocation expenses are those rents that we have to pay temporarily while we're out of the, uh, building. Cause so we have to relocate to other premises and you know, the sites that we're looking at include the convention center and other places.
That's covered under temporary office rent, right? Isn't that under temporary office rent?
Oh, yes.
So what is relocation expenses?
Well, that's one in the same. Temporary office of relocation.
Okay, so it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Temporary office.
Yeah.
And storage.
Storage, yes, uh, the current furniture that we have. And the equipment needs to be stored because it needs to be completely moved out of the premises. And although we're looking at economical ways of storing it, uh, for instance, at the foreign trade zone. Um, it still costs expenses.
You would think that all the property and buildings and offices that the state has, that you don't have a place that we can store without having to pay eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah, well, um, that's, uh, the, the lowest cost that we could come up with was at the foreign trade zone.
So we have no empty, empty offices anywhere?
Not that we've been able to find.
How extensively did you guys look?
Uh, I believe our, our team did look and inquired with Dags.
Okay, um, so if you're storing, if it's costing us eighty thousand to store, how much equipment are you actually storing?
Uh, that's a lot of the file cabinets, a lot of the, uh, the desk, uh, that needs to be stored, uh.
So did you come up with a cost assessment on what would be the cost to replace all of those things versus what we're paying for rent? Did you, have you looked at that?
We did, and that was part of the assessment for the partitions. It would have cost us a lot more to store the partitions, what, for one thing, the partitions couldn't have been replaced anyway because it is too old. Once dismantled, they can't be replaced.
Right. So that caused under partitions and furniture?
Right, so that, so that.
Four hundred and eight thousand dollars of furniture, and yet we're paying another eighty thousand to store furniture or store something. So I'm just wondering, what's the cost effectiveness? Sometimes, you know, people rent these storage things to store some stuff. At the end of the day, at the end of the year, when you add up how much they paid for rent and what they stored inside, they could have bought branching stuff. Just didn't make sense.
Yeah.
Did you guys do a cost assessment as to what, what kind of furniture we have in there that we're storing and. Can it be partitions cost all four hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Well, on the partition side, uh, we did get estimates, we did have vendors come in and give us, uh. Uh, an estimate of how much it would cost to replace.
So what's just the partitions?
The partitions came out to about seventeen thousand per partition.
Seventeen thousand per partition?
Per cubicle.
Per cubicle, yes.
And how many cubicles?
Uh, there were about. Yeah, twenty, twenty, yeah, twenty. No, there was more than that.
So if there's more than that, then you're paying all of this money is going for partitions and not for furniture then?
It's basically going for partitions.
Okay, because it's misleading when you say partitions and furniture is what the breakdown was on that.
There are some desks that have to be replaced because, uh, some of them are already built in partition desks, uh, which will have to be replaced with, uh, different desks.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, if I heard you correctly, you said the storage facility is the foreign trade zone?
We are looking at the foreign trade zone.
So why would they even charge a sister agency eighty grand?
Uh, I, I guess it's because they could have used that space for other purposes.
Yeah, but that makes absolutely no sense. To charge a sister agency eighty grand for use of space that, I mean, are you displacing somebody to, to put your partitions and furniture in there?
I can't say if they're displacing.
Talk to David and ask if he could just give that to you, take the eighty grand off of this balance sheet.
Thank you, um. Okay, uh, so we started to know that we actually have companion bill that went over that was heard, uh, so.
Can we, can we just ask the Director, so what do you think of, I mean, really part of figuring out how much this is gonna cost and that?
This is a project.
Save money?
This is a project, it's been ongoing and it's been discussed and I was involved in one meeting with the team regarding this. And when it was talked about the cost and estimates and the like. And so, working with them, we put these numbers together in response to the, the bill that was, uh, heard in the Senate.
Right, but doesn't bother you that we have to spend this kind of money and not really look into whether or not we can. Save, save some stuff because it's actually not your money, it's the taxpayers' money, so. But you know, if you had to move your house and you had to find a place to store, you will call your friend, you will call your relatives, you can try to find out if anybody can garage, you can pour stuff, right? Instead of spending eighty thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering if you guys put that kind of effort into saving the taxpayers' dollars.
The team did look at that and we will relook at it and get back to you with that further looking, especially, uh, as Senator Kai mentioned, to work with, uh.
Those are the kinds of things you as a director should be asking your people and being, you know, recording accountable. And not accepting stuff just like that without questioning.
We'll get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to H B nine nine one, uh, relating to Voice Technology Development Corporation, uh. Director Salia.
Thank you, we stand on the testimony.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Len Gashi.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we stand on our written testimony and support this measure.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Chamber of Commerce, Sheri. Sheri, uh, next up, Lauren Zerbo from Just One Point Food Industry on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom chair.
Thank you, uh. Herman Ku Klugler in support, Ken Chung. Oceanate Laboratories in support, oh, over. Thank you, uh. And Caroline Z, Alz Konzelski in support. Uh, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to H B nine nine nine. Relating to White Technology Development Corporation. First up, Chris, uh, Chris Salia.
Senators, uh, Senator, thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, Len Gashi.
Thank you, Chair, we also stand in.
Thank you. Uh, next up, I have Tracy Tyra Carnate in support, Susan Yamada. Uh, Pacific Asian Center in support, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Okay, I got a lot of people in support on H B nine nine nine. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, um. H T D C, please. So, so Len, I appreciate you know, we have a companion bill, um, that went over. Uh, but WAM and Finance changed appropriations to unspecified amounts. WAM also changed the composition of the H T D C board by specifying that the U H representative shall be the chairperson of the border regions or designate. Can you describe the projects you will fund and the number of awards you expect to make?
Uh, sure, thank you for the question. So, this bill is a, again, it's a blank appropriation, but initially it was an administrative bill with fifteen million dollars. And the appropriation was intended to build upon H T D C's core programs. H T C's core programs being, uh, grant programs for small business innovation research, uh, grant programs for manufacturers. Uh, upgrading their equipment and also for accelerator programs which help, uh, new businesses get started. This bill builds upon our, our core programs and aligns them with some of the state goals, uh, D B A parties in terms of. Uh, digital, uh, traded sector and renewable energy or climate change. Uh, we intend, we expect, uh, we've, last year, we did three hundred companies served with, with the programs that we have. And this bill would provide significantly more funding, so we anticipate, uh, you know, more than three hundred. It's hard for me to, you know, to spell out at this time.
Thank you, Len. Okay, uh, moving on to H B one one nine three. Uh, first up, Len.
Oh, thank you, we stand on our testimony.
Thank you. Uh, next on Zoom, Anne Lopez, A G's office.
Not present on your chair.
Oh, that's okay, it's there in person. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator, I apologize about that. Uh, Josh Michaels, Deputy Attorney General, uh, you have our testimony. We would just like to respectfully note the potential constitutional issue with seventy five percent requirement and our suggested language, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, Taxation Gary Suguma, uh, Numa, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. Gary Suguma, Director of Taxation, the department stands on his written testimony, offering comments, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, testifying, Chairman Sheri Menor. Thank you. Uh, next up, in support, Herman Ku Klugler in support. Uh, Matthew Sullivan, uh, for Oceanet. Thank you. And then testifying for Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh, we will stand on our written testimony, be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, seeing none, any questions? Uh, seeing none, oh, any question? Okay, uh, moving on to House Bill one one nine four. Uh, relating to Economic Development District Planning Organization. First up and only one up, Scott Glenn. From Office of. Thank you. Uh, anyone else wishing to testify on this measures, seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to H B one four zero eight. Uh, in regards to relating to digital equity. Uh, first up, D B A Chris Salia.
Senator, testifying support.
Thank you. Next up, Dentry Bartoldus, uh, Disability Council in support. Uh, Stacy Aldridge in support, Garrett Yoshimi in support. Leah Laramie in support, Kirby Shaw in support. Curin. Oh. Testifying for Congress, Chamber of Commerce in support on Zoom.
I'm present on Zoom chair.
Uh, Janine Suki on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom.
Okay, testifying for Hawaii Broadband Hui, uh, uh, on Zoom. Okay.
Oops. Good afternoon, um, Chair and Committee. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the, uh, broadband Hui, it's a couple hundred people across, uh, various, uh, organizations. Uh, government agencies and, and private enterprise and providers. The focus of this bill is to provide, uh, money in advance of federal appropriations in order to, uh. Uh, make sure that people, uh, not only have a connection to the, to the internet, but rather they have some equipment and they. Uh, have, uh, training so they can use it effectively for healthcare, education, workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Kelly Lopez in support. Leomomicon in support and Caroline Alzelski in support. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, um, we are going to recess for decision making. Uh, ready to decision make on our one thirty P M, uh, agenda. First bill up is House Bill one nine two H D two relating to the energy of, energy efficiency. My recommendation is to pass as is. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote.
Chair Decoy.
I.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga, excuse, Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill up, H B nine six three, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any opposition or reservations? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have H B nine eight nine. My recommendation is to pass as is. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, please.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any reservations or nays to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, H B nine nine one relating to White Technology Development Corporation. Recommendation is to pass as is. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, only any reservations or opposition to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, H B nine 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 H D one relating to White Technology Development Corporation. Recommendation is to pass with amendments inserting the language from S B one two nine seven S D two, establishing a three-year. Hawaii Office of Naval Research Grant Program to provide grants to qualified businesses conducting research and development in, in alternative energy. And making technical amendments for clarity and consistency. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, please.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any reservations or opposition to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, H B one one nine three, H D one relating to the tax credit for research activities. Recommendation is to pass with amendments noting the concerns and amendment suggestions from DOTAX. Taking the suggested amendments, making the certification deadline March thirty first, on page three, line fifteen, changing taxable year to calendar year. At the suggested language on page two, subsection B, to prevent the credit from being claimed on research that has been funded by tax exempt receipts such as a grant. Also noting the concerns raised in Attorney General testimony. And taking the recommendation to delete paragraph two of the definition of qualified high technology business on page thirteen, lines four to seven. And add new wording for the definition beginning on page thirteen, line one, qualified high technology business. Shall have the same meaning as in section two, three, five, five dash seven point three C, provided that the business shall be registered to do business in the state. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, please.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, H B one one nine four H D two relating to an Economic Development District Planning Organization. My recommendation is to pass as is. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And our final bill is H B one four zero eight, H D three. Thank you, and our final bill is HB 1408, HD3 relating to digital equity. Our recommendation is to pass as is, committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote.
Noting the excuse absence of Senator Fukunaga, any reservations or opposition to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard, none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, and with that, we can adjourn this hearing, mahalo for being here today, adjourned.